Given that a special meeting in the town of Virginia Beach, Texas would be held future to the twenty-third day of May, twenty-three PM. And the town will be at City Hall, Texas, seventy-five, seventy-eight. Due to Texas government codes, section five-five-one, two-seven, one and more members of the town council named, and just made it be a video conference. The former town council will be physically present and be above meeting locations following and be discussed. All the word at six-oh-one. I just feel like to thank you for allowing us to live in your field in town and visa. Please guide us to make the best decisions for our town and future of our town that will be involved here, so. For impacted by the horrible disaster of last week. And the people that are continue to be affected by that.
Councilmember Romero? Councilmember Howard?
Here.
Councilmember Torres?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilmember Jacoby?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes.
Mayor Carter, I did get a text from Dr. Ramirez that he's on his way.
I'd like to make a much excuse, um, councilmember Gonzalez, as he was moving out his daughter from residency.
A second. Not to me, but it's councilmember Gonzalez, councilmember Howard, they did away Mayor Carter. Excuse. Mr. Gonzalez.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Torres?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacoby?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. So before I just try to answer this last question, for person who would draft a county property, there will be no discretion from the nation. They can do their agenda item, identify themselves, which people, you request form that be presented to the city committee party. And a new business discussion, consideration, possible action to the following items, you know, extra or NATO, special consideration, possible action regarding the United States or NATO on May thirteen, twenty-twenty-three.
Do you have anything? Or do you want me to go with what I have?
Go ahead.
Okay, um, so I did go to the chief David and I attended the emergency management meeting this morning. And, um, they thanked all of the partners again for being involved. Right now, the problem is being the threshold that we are just not even anywhere close to the, the meeting for FEMA. They have everyone trying to, again, like Mayor Carter said last week, reach out to senators. It's gonna have to be at a federal level that this gets any sort of assistance. So that brings us back to our question as to what we can do as a town. We really can, one of our best options is to stick with trying to help through the Salvation Army. Because they have a five oh one three C where we can donate funds to be done. The county can't take any donations or they are not set up for any sort of assistance like that. If their FEMA is not kicked in and they can't do anything, they can't accept it. So they said they found themselves in the same position we're in, wanting to help, but can't doing any, can't do anything. Because we're nowhere near the threshold, we don't have the right approval level of the government to. And the, um, the threshold for damages is, is just keep going up each year. So we're, we're nowhere even close to coming to what, um, so there's gonna have to be some special provision, provision made for this. So Mr. Husham's suggestion was to go through somebody like the Salvation Army that has a five oh one three C that can take a donation. Um, because we as them as the county, us as the city, we're not, you know, equipped to handle money like, like that. We're not allowed to take donations or so. I don't have much of an update as far as we all know that there was fifty houses that were completely destroyed. There's still, um, um, people that are displaced, but it, it sounds like the county, as far as their assistance goes, is as far as it can go at this time.
I, uh, I think we defer till next meeting to see what we should do based on what the county has been able to help with and what, uh. Not FEMA, but, um. The small, the SBA and see what kind of financial situations there and have a better understanding of, uh, what we need to do, in my opinion, so.
Right, and to add on to that, Mary, they did say that a lot of the, um, so while the individuals, I did get told while the individuals homes, you know, they don't have, the, the, the people that own the property. Are, that will qualify for this SBA set assistance. So while the, 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 the trailers that were on there might not get, you know, the, the people that own those, the people that own the property. Will have some sort of ability to recover and, you know, there might be some assistance that to tackle or to tag on to your SB qualifications, that, that, the landowners.
Yes, and, and all of the people that we're renting are, uh, being helped by the county with thirty-day rentals, uh, assistance, so. Which is a great thing and, uh, you know, let's just hope that things keep moving forward and these people get to help that they need and. As I was saying, and, and we only have three weeks to our, our next meeting. And so by then we'll have a better understanding of what these people probably will need and we'll be able to help them. If we can hear you, the Salvation Army will earmark those money specifically for those victims and, uh.
Yeah, and so there was right now, no urgency to house people?
No, everybody, everybody has, has been helped.
Okay.
Yeah, no, no one is in a shelter, actually, no one actually spent a night in a shelter. Um, the, we've all come together as a community and taking care of these people as best as we can so far. Like I say, it's, it's a short term, but at least we have the, 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 the long, short term taking care of thirty days.
Yeah.
And then, um, and then we can reassess, I've, you can read it in three weeks, have a better understanding of what.
Now, I'll, I'll just keep in touch with them, anything I know, I'll update you with this in a minute.
Anybody else? I have two legislative discussions, consideration, possible action on town overlay district. All I have to say, uh, before we get going on, on this, is that we, I've gone through two of these already. In my time and, um, nothing's ever hit the, uh, the books, okay, because we always get caught in the weeds and, um. And as you can see, things are starting to progress in our town, we're starting to get commercial development, things are starting to move. So I, I would appreciate if we don't get stuck in the weeds and we kind of approve something because we can always amend things. It may not be a perfect document, it's not shoot for the perfect document, because not, it's never gonna be perfect. And it will be evolving, so we have a good basis of, of, of two different overlay districts that we've done in the last six years or five years. David, but it's actually been, oh, it's seven years that I've been working on this overall. Cause everyone always, like I say, it wouldn't be the perfect document, so let's, uh. Try to make it the best that we can, but not get too caught in the weeds.
The one thing I just wanted to say to start with is, um, it just certainly give you back on that is, um, that we're still gonna be talking to, you guys can just. You can wave the magic wand, this is how you would like it to look, don't get caught up on the procedural stuff, we can present, um, the procedural, how to, of course, um, those kinds of things. We can present that to you in the actual ordinance, you guys just decide, you know, the, the big picture stuff and then, um, some of this stuff wasn't. Mr. Rosen is never seen before, you know, it's clearly pulled from other documents, so that was one of the things he and I talked about before the meeting is that we will suggest the, the procedural stuff. Um, if you mentioned front of, you could, we use his words, wave the magic wand, how does it look? And then we'll provide something in the, in the ordinance of how to, how to get there.
Yeah, and, and I don't know that, you know, but I would hope that we could start with what kind of Nate, Nate Dean ended with, right? And, and which is kind of a build on what. Suzie has, has, has begun, right? And so, and I don't know how that ever got to the second reading, um, somehow, I don't remember how that all, I didn't have a do wish it, but, um. So, okay, so we're gonna start off with Nate and Smith, we're not gonna go with Suzie's, right?
Yeah, so by starting off at twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-five, right?
So if anybody wants to take a read on this, it's great.
If I, many areas, just to kind of add to what you're saying, but yeah, the, you know, kind of magic wand approach, there are two things are aesthetics and scope of coverage. And, and I think that in, in the, or there, that's. The, the ordinance that was passed before she made, so. She was almost, uh, that's gonna be section five, section six, binary area over those two things. So, section five is the, where it applies that exists are the actual site design documents. But kind of all this, councilman, where in this document that says?
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, I remember, I recall going over. A similar overlay district and we were talking about how the current, um. The current look of the existing, um, five-ten, you know, highway buildings on the highway could not be changed, correct? Because they're like grandfathered into the previous ones, so this overlay district would, um, solely be for new construction.
Year.
Well, this was previous to, this was previous to like.
This is the, the.
Seven, eight.
Yeah, well, generally, you're, you're gonna have grandfathering on anything that has to do with, with the land use or anything. You're gonna have that as, as a concept that applies every, imposing new lands. So this certainly constitutes a land use regulation, I should tell you that, but what they, what they can and can't do. So, um, now that grandfathering goes, generally goes away, uh, under two circumstances, that are, that are speaking about. Ownership of the land changes hands, so you have a, a business that is, let's say, for overlay district, plus. Yes, owners of those businesses in there that are gonna have appearances that may be out of conformity. This document is not gonna put them under an obligation to change their structure to make it conform to. Now, if that business owner sells to another, another. The new landowner is not gonna be grandfather and is going to have to, uh, meet the requirements. And, and, including possibly even changing the, the existing building to, to come in. The other circumstance is when the, uh, by the, the original landlord, originally his grandfather, is going to make some major substance change to the appearance. Build on addition, uh, change the color of it, doing it to constitute a supplement, uh, imparting one way to step. That also, uh, creates a highlight that they're gonna lose grandpa. So, so the, what's grandfather is anybody who's not gonna change the ownership of the building or change the look of the building or doing the major stuff. That, that's one of those people are not gonna be required to come into conformity with a new overlay ordinance, just because we just, that's it. They can sit on it for, uh, for as long as, as long as they own the building, as long as they're in. There is, there is another possibility to, to deal with grandfathering status, that as you can impose a, a time limit coming to conformity. The formula for doing that is it's, it's kind of complex, it has to do with copulation of what the investment fact, expectation of the owner is in continuing. That property in a certain way or a certain degree, but I don't really consider that to be one of the factor because it's, it's sometimes really difficult to do with your product. Uh, so really what we're looking at is, if you pass something that imposes estate requirements, uh, they're only gonna kick in when you have new developers, new owners, or any other changes.
Let's do that.
That I remember we were talking about the same issue, that it was grandfather, that, that, that we can maybe, uh, for the businesses, help through our CDC money. And, uh, help them out with that way, if they think about new signage anyways, or, you know, a change that way. Just puts it up a little bit that if, that the city, hopefully, that we have some kind of program that we can top them in the system in change.
So that would be a CDC issue in this portion.
Right, but we just asked a bit.
So that's, that's.
To say that we discussed that the CDC.
Yes.
Would be able to.
If you got a CDC incentivized, but even existing owners to change, for us to vitalize, make your changes, that will require them to stand on their time and you said, see.
Yeah.
We don't wanna penalize. Businesses that have been here for years, decades and, uh, in punish them because, uh, they don't need to sit in that. That they've been here best in our town and they live your paybacks.
Not, not to get caught up, I, I think this is a really good, it's, it's really well done as it is.
It's very comprehensive.
I mean, it's, I think, but the only, one, one thing I do see that, um, we might just wanna change now so we don't get caught up, because it is, it is kind of a weed stain. Is in, um, that's on page seven, where it says, uh, let's see, page seven, fourteen, item number one. Yes, get there. It says, uh, colors of building exterior should be Sherman Williams suburban and modern historical colors. And, and obviously, I. Two, three, four, okay, um, I wasn't so concerned with what the colors were other than the title, because then it's, um, please, they just have color times. So, um, in, in a couple of years, they will not have something called.
The, um, this session was, was right of the point. And, and, and it was, this, these buildings were based on the fact that these are historical preservation colors that are used throughout the country.
So they're gonna always have them.
They're more than likely, they will always have.
That's great, because I could just see, see somebody saying, well, I don't, they don't insist anymore. I just don't want somebody getting caught up on that, you know?
And, 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 Mary, you, you claim this, uh, it is based on something that apparently the National Trust for Storage Preservation, you know, if we really wanted to kind of walk in and, you know, sure, sure Williams. Goes out of business to part of a certain reason.
Right.
You could say, you could just add, or substantially similar or.
Now, we'd like to strike the Sherman Williams and we just use, uh, National Trust for Storage Preservation Preservation Color.
Yeah.
Which, which would be fun when we have a comment, and true, there's a chemical.
Or, 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 or your quote unquote, or something, you know. I mean, I think as long as they exist, it's great, you know?
But now, for, for example, if somebody wanted to start up, uh, a new good, a new business, we're gonna start up. Probably sooner than later, on highway, on, on highway one hundred, how would they, how would, how would this, how would this get to them, this document?
We're, uh, when it's passed as an ordinance, we have to publish it and, and then it will be, it'll be a town ordinance. Typically, uh, a normal experience developer will take the time to look through the town where it's like, we're all able to take it. I guarantee they'll probably do that, the time to have people to start, that haven't done, uh, their homework and their space that had to be reminded by our building officials, hey? You're proposing something that won't be permitted or you're gonna build, you're starting to build something that's out of that, that we apply to basically. Generally, that doesn't happen, we have that, it happens that way, generally, that kind of, I do the whole first to figure out where to.
Welcome back in sharing that, this is what.
Yeah.
And, 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 and what, what, what does a, typically? Business owner, yeah, and he comes to see all this, that, a lot of folks, fans.
Well, we don't really have anything to give them, so, you know, I, so what I did with Dollar General is I said, you know, please, you know, I just, I just said, you know, it won't get approved if it's obnoxious and ugly, you know? And I don't want a big, you know, yellow building and, you know, I mean, I don't really have anything to back it up, I just sort of said with confidence that, you know, I didn't want an obnoxious looking, you know, Dollar General, I wanted one that looked like the island, I wanted it, you know? And, and they didn't ask me for anything to prove that they couldn't have a yellow building, so I didn't invite them anything, but I don't, I don't have any, and they're the only business that have come in that's actually really wanted anything, you know? So I've not had to, but if they were, they would just come in and apply for a permit, right? So it'd be the same thing as going through our other building codes and look at it with, okay, does it match this, does it match that?
And that, my question is a little more focused on that, like what, what sort of forms they need to fill out to apply for permission like that.
So we don't have a business, um, permit application, we have just the, the building application, so they would be, so they would be fall under, if they were building a business, then they would also have to fall under the building codes. And then, you know, we would, uh, cross compare it to the overlay district to make sure that they, and that's kind of what we did, you know, I told her. What the concept was of what we would want, what we wouldn't want, and so that's kind of what we did, so we don't, um, I know there is somewhere, I think it's in our fees. Somewhere we talk about a business, um, license fee or a business permit, but I don't have an application for it, I've never, you know, seen one in, in actual practice. So, um, we don't have anything that I know of that has ever been filled out for that, so.
Really, to, to be able to charge them, uh, who would need an ordinance?
I'm not, yeah, so, so some, some, uh, most cities do, you have a, you know, a business permitting fee, you know, and, um, she says seven of ordinance, which, you know, we can do, but there's really no process right now.
This is a new beast in the world.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's very tiny, yeah.
Yes, very much, I, I don't wanna, I don't want another business to come through that, you know, some, some business might not listen to, like, on.
My, my, my question regarding. This ordinance. And how it would be, if it's in conflict with like our signage ordinance? And, and, and how would that play out?
The, the sign ordinance that we passed recently is, is one of general applications, right? If this ordinance creates, uh, uh, special sign regulations in, in district that covers, then those will apply and those will try, the general application. Within the district, so, and it could be more restrictive or less restrictive, and it just, the ordinance will act specify.
This one is more restricted.
Correct, so this, this will specify within the ordinary district. These are the regulations, you will get, uh, the general, or, or general sign regulation, whatever, but just, you know, all areas in town.
Let's do that.
I have a question, H, I'm watching, uh, the materials. Um, number four of what is about it, this one, one, it says, um. The last part of the sentence, or aluminum clap, polyurethane panels, are these the Trex panels? Or is that something? I don't know. Because polyurethane is recycled plastic material, Trex is the company that started that.
At least, fine, that's the. It's wood.
So it's wood.
Native, like layers.
Okay, so, um, I think we need to add the recycled plastic material. Because this is the perfect material for our coastal area here, it doesn't rot, it doesn't mold, it doesn't, it doesn't do anything, it just sits there. Like the rain, but the ecotourism center, they made it that way, a lot of bulldogs are made that way. It's, it's a material that is very hard to destruct, distract and doesn't mold, doesn't break, doesn't chip, doesn't rust, is super expensive. So I think we should put that in there because I see more and more companies coming out with, um, outside building material. For that.
What page are you on, sorry?
Pardon me, what page are you on? Five. And it's under materials.
I can see two, four, four, you know, this kind of, not allowed to do that.
Oh, wood panels, I see, yeah. So, I hope we can add to the recycled plastic Trex material. And then the second question I have, big brick. Why was it not allowed? Because a lot of houses here are being built with that brick panel kind of stuff. And I just would like to know the reason why.
I don't think we would remember back in the days, why did we get that, um, but I, 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 I see what you're saying and. I mean, I, I, you said in my house, um. I don't have an answer for it, I mean, I, I don't see why we wouldn't allow. Those kind of things, okay?
And by the way, I, I, I don't think I said it clearly, that all of the aesthetic choices in here, these, those are purely, uh, policy level decisions that the council, and the council can read and decide. Questions of aesthetic like that are, uh, I think the language here was taken from some other communities, uh, ordinance, and so that's, that's where the individual items ended up, but council feels like it is going in a good direction.
And, and, and I, I think maybe what you're talking about might may fall under masonry. On the allowed. So.
I had some time today, um, before the meeting, to take a drive down our new, um, Dollar General. And I'm just looking at this now, and it's pretty close to that house in the corner, the building itself. Um, so then I'm over here thinking, okay, the light that's going to use, to be used to reflect for the parking, I guess it going to be bothersome to the neighbor? You know, a light glaring at your window at night would be terrible. And then thinking about, are they gonna put up the fencing? And, and of course, they're gonna probably do landscaping, um, but just thinking about the lighting and the fencing, and then there's like this, I know I'm going off topic, sorry, but. There's like a big ditch in there, there's two big ditches, was that purposefully made or not has anything to do with this, but I'm just thinking.
I, 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 I'm sure that the dishes are for water re, re, I mean, retention for, for drainage issues and I, I asked Randy to send me the, the signage.
Sign.
Um, uh, one, the ordinance today, and there is a, there's a large part of it about lighting and how it affects neighbors, right? Okay, so that's, that, that, that already is part of our ordinance, I mean, so. I was hearing the same thing of people that have houses right there. Let me see what.
And I think we have already in our ordinance, is how many parking spaces, how many percentage of green space has to be on there, so we have that.
Tree use and.
Yeah, okay. So how do we go about if I, do we have to vote on taking the big brick out or is there?
We can just, I think we all kind of, do you guys all agree to?
Yeah.
I mean, like, let, we could just talk, I think, openly and be like, yes, no, and then we can approve as amended, as at the end.
And I, I think we just wanna try to make it as easy, vegetable as possible for the contractors.
And, and, and like I say, it's a living document, like you got for our last meeting, and we can always amend and change it to go, doctor.
My apologies to the, to those presidents for being a little late, um. I don't know if this was discussed previously, but looking at the, the areas of application, I think it makes perfect sense for our town in its current form. But I'm not sure if it's even, if it's document or maybe it's hardly living capacity of it. That, uh, as our town grows and expands and as the, the thoroughfares that are used, uh, maybe as. There's future development around our community that falls within town improvement step, uh, if there are. Maybe language we're turning in there that other major thoroughfares of, or commercial districts that are established within, um, these. And my, if, if I interpreted it wrong, but it looks like it's pivoted into, and this road up here and our, our highway, kind of, type of.
The only, the only, uh, zones that are, that are commercial, you know, right now, right, are five-ten, special commercial and one hundred. And, um. Where else can business go, to be honest with you, um, and, and if we were to annex, right, west, east, then, then I'm sure that we would have to amend this to include those areas.
With, with a, like a generic statement there of, uh, or, uh. Further commercial developments that are created within the, the boundaries of town improvement step. And create this, so where. As we expand and create more commercials, you don't then have to go back and address this at the same time.
Well, it, it's actually kind of difficult to anticipate, uh, from a language point of view, when you're writing a regulation. Where you're gonna, where you're gonna put the new overlay area as advice, like even, as you read this one, you notice it's very specific, it's kind of a limitation based on theme. Is the area, uh, if we were to do it in a way. Which is sort of describing, you know, the first area, you might run into difficulty in interpreting exactly like what the current area is. I will say though, that, that, uh, you will have. Major events that can be reacted to by, by council. Uh, to create, you know, new application of this overlay district or another overlay district. In, in the form of an extension, like a rear nature, or. Rezoning, which this council will be responsible for anyway, so this is another, another area where the newly annexed area. Or existing area to accommodate commercial belt. You know that at the same time, you can, you can make changes to your old, so I, I think it's unlikely that, that. We'll be surprised by the development of the commercial area that we can't react to by creating new application of this or another. Overlay district, uh, and, and so you wouldn't need necessarily to anticipate it. Uh, so that coverage will exist. Uh, out of, out of worry that it's gonna happen without your ability. You can easily create another overlay that can accommodate some newly annexed area or an area that we decide as a council. To change to a commercial area.
Um, page fourteen, fourteen paragraphs. I just wanna point out and wanna know that what was upon us, um, the last sentence of years says. The kind of application, these applications will be reviewed and either approved or denied by the LBBV within, in working days. Or will be deemed automatically approved. That's the other, you know, quote unquote.
Let me, uh, if I may, let me say something about the, this LBBV. And the ordinance calls for the creation of another theory by, uh, at least, uh.
Is it?
Oiler. Or, so, man, again, this, that, that was probably a feature of whatever, uh. Ordinance, this language bar. Uh, and it came from a bigger community, like, let's say, Arlington, Arlington, that's. When you're third different city area, so that's no problem with that, to be, to be, it may be a little bit repressed. So, um, you know, you, you probably want, uh. Some decision maker handling what's, what's happening in, in subsection C there. But you may not want it to be, uh, an actual new ordinance. We might, you, you got a number of options here, you could either, uh, that's the story of the city administration. Uh, you could, uh, make it a feature of, uh. One of the other boards that you got, like, and it's an administrative, that's the work justice. I think probably zoning board of justice would be, uh, like a better. Fit for this kind of decision making than the, the P and Z, who's, who's subject matter area tends to be, uh. Not the administration regulation, but the creation regulation. So, um, but that's, that's, that's one feature of this, of this work product here that, that might not be as easy to apply. Just because of the character of the native versus theory. You're gonna end up with people who double triple duty.
Um, so if that's the case on, on, on page two, um, the fourth paragraph. And in the definitions there, we'll have to change towards red. Okay, strike that out. Or at least modify that to, uh, to, 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 yeah.
I, I think we can accomplish. I don't know what I was talking about, by just eliminating the red definition on page section two. And then on page four in subsection C.
Uh, that, that everything that says LBBV will be substituted by, I don't know, boarding adjustments.
And do I want to have it deemed automatically approved?
Well, that's, uh. That goes back to that, that doctrine that we were dealing with in terms of. Subdivision with regulation, where there's, there's a really new statute that, that, uh. That, uh, basically is automatically happened at the time, it's, it's not ten days, uh, uh, so, uh, ten days is probably, you know, unworkable. You're sort of getting the board of justice to be, uh, if, if we wanted to have it in page at all, we can say thirty, or we can just do away with. The, the automatic approval as a matter of law on the subsection C, and if there is a, under law, under state law, well, then it is what it is. But I, yeah, it, it would be very difficult to have to deal with a project everywhere, even, even a thirty day project.
So, page four. Paragraph C. Draw the, 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 the.
Including prospect of on that approval.
Yes, yeah, no, there's no automatic approval, and, and if there is a, a state law that we get. If, uh, you know, the city isn't doing their, their, their due diligence, to ensure that we're. I, I think in page D, there is also.
You said on page three, you're gonna, we're gonna get rid of under standards, social ization included. With a prior approval by the planning and zoning or the board of justice.
What is the application of, uh, order just? Something that, question, council would like a, a new progress, uh, new place.
Um, like, uh, section B on page four.
What the. The detriment to having someone like that in there. The council mayor, example, the category. Those are the new faith on the satisfaction. With, with the USC, the, the advantage to having something like that in there is that the next level at which someone. Then it's challenging. Network decision by the A, would be to record, so. Having, having some relief at, at, at the council level, or someone that, uh, from the DOA, uh. Who want to at least. Provide additional opportunities for stall some kind of courage. It's not, it's not sent you what you have, but. You're balancing, having to deal with it. First deal with it would just be sliding into your next agenda, you have to give it ten days. For our section. But if you didn't want to have the other thing, I'm having. But then, but then fight it out. Through, through other means, and you would fire.
What do you, what do you think about that?
I think having a company here that's already recorded. Makes sense, I'm sure that if somebody had major issues with it. If you probably find someone else to issue.
Yes, sir. Going? Did I? Let's do that.
I'm sorry, I, I, I have to get rid of the ten day, it's, it's not the same kind of ten day deadline, it's their deadline.
No, yes, it's their, it's their, and, and, and they, I wanna make sure that. We're okay with it, I guess, those kind of appeals we get, the wrong language in there, then.
What's the permission?
On, okay, seven, um, the section E windows. I don't understand. Uh, shutters must approach to the building are not allowed, as, as, do you have a question about spending in a hurricane zone?
Obviously, I'm able to track more storm shutters or.
I agree with you. Really, really, we all have storm shutters, pretty much.
Well, I thought when I read that, it was just beginning with my language, I thought it's this metal. Shutter gates you can close from coming storm from, I, that's what I thought.
That's all like New York style?
Yes, yes, that's what it means.
Yes.
Define which shuttered then?
Well, it says window coverings. In the window.
There's a place in the word talks about.
Bars, from the bars.
She's like the bomb, she's like, not, not, not the bombs.
Yeah, number five, and, and, and the eight regular bars may not be installed on exterior, when you're in bars, basically, it's true. It's David here, we don't have any.
Yeah. Maybe we say that storm shutters are allowed because. You see negligence to your own building by not allowing storm shutters. Might be some insurance issues there, too.
So on page eleven. We have the mobile and letter slot signs will not be allowed, so I'm guessing the letter slot signs. Are like the ones based by cafe hats for their weekly specials.
And, and that's already in our sign order.
And that is, yeah. No, and then if you look at page ten. It says signs must be individually metal, plastic, or wood, plastic would be slot, right? So could we just?
So, so in that case, she's very proud of her, she sounds, you know.
No, right, but I'm saying like this one, like this in the long. Mobile and letter slot signs will not be allowed.
Which, which number is?
So go to page eleven, number nine.
Yeah, the mobile and the letters, not sign.
Right, I have that one, and you were reading.
And then if you go to number three on page ten. Signs, signs must be individual metal, plastic, or wood. So on one page we're saying no, and on one page you're saying yes.
Lots of center plastic, though.
Yeah. I'm just saying probably two.
Of course, well, right now, half the center of plastic will fall out.
Yeah, I know. That's less than I've ever signed, not be allowed.
Yeah, I'm just intending to, to permit plastic signs as long as they're not of the mobile, mobile variety or the, or the slot. In other words, like a, a, a one piece, nonchangeable, plastic face. Like, like Dollar General typically uses, where it's sort of a metal box, and then there's lights inside, and then. There's plastic on either side, where the light kind of shines, allows it to shine through, I think that's.
That is that, the, the, those, the plastic face of it is for me.
As long as it's not mobile.
Oh, that's heard.
Or slotted.
So what is a mobile and letter slot sign?
Well.
That's without.
They have to be told or. Or stuck in the ground temporarily.
So then we just leave it there.
I mean, if, if.
So you're saying like the one like Dollar, Dollar General that you just described, we have that would be not allowed, though. And they're not allowed, it's a wood, metal, plastic, or fiberglass.
I think the Dollar General would be page ten, number three. That Dollar General.
But that's saying not allowed, though, right?
That one says is allowed.
Oh, wow.
Page ten.
Well, okay, but that, the, the not allowed is referring to camp.
Okay, okay.
Oh, okay.
Free is his science.
And, and, and we have a, we have a conflict with our sign ordinance in number three. Regarding the use of flags and banners. And our sign ordinance, we have a ten day. And this has thirty days. I don't know if we want to move that to ten days, like we have, we have an assignment.
But what page are you on there?
Um, uh, ten, uh, on the sign, on number, uh, three. Under the sign guidelines. In our sign ordinance, we have it, um, for ten days.
Right.
So in other words, it, it passes with thirty Q.
I think we should change it ahead of hand. The word, we don't have a conflict. We don't need as much kind of flags around town.
No. Other ones that are calling, they go cocktails, breakfast, tacos.
Yeah.
If you were to look it up. Like on a fine flag, you can look up feather flags, and that's.
Those are the ones that he has over there for the alcohol, right, yeah.
Oh, yeah. They, they do get your attention, but they're tacky, so I'll get out, you know.
So, so you. You want to permit them, but just as long as they're no longer, not in the ground, wanted to, yes.
Thirty days per calendar year. Doesn't say consecutive.
It's not standing. One, begin the year.
A sign containing neon lights, is that also in the sign ordinance? I mean, in the, under lights, yes, that is, we, we stroked, that is. The Hollywood lights. I'm gonna have to look at. Our ordinance for the lights and just see. And just kind of, but be side by side.
The, the sign ordinance is very specific about.
Very specific.
Of affecting neighbors and the surrounding area. And not intruding on their.
Okay, so at the end of this, it says, town council. First, and it's often the first reading of this on, since I might want to. Your old version, but we don't want to do a separate reading of the old version.
Anybody else?
Mayor, if I may, I would like to make a motion that we. Through the first reading. This ordinance. With some changes that we discussed. It'll be twenty, it'll be twenty twenty three dash, twenty twenty one. Twenty twenty one dash twenty five. Which would be easier.
Yes, so it'll change it, and right, we'll give it a new. Four, I think is what we're at. So it'll be a new, it'll be a new ordinance number, so those are twenty, it'll be, uh, twenty twenty three dash, I think, oh, four, is the number. I'm just. Oh, yeah, you have it right there, the sign name.
So that's one.
So that's one? Yeah, this is, this is.
I was gonna get to that.
I gotta say.
Again.
All made by Commissioner. So, and second, Commissioner Howard to approve ordinance number twenty twenty three oh four. Overlaying this.
Councilmember, mayor?
Of course, all the other, you got, uh, ordinance, town council, town, town leadership, Texas. Created overlay district, I'm taking them by ten, and on higher than hundred. Flag or. The purpose of establishing a little bit of a, this is.
Councilmember, mayor?
Yes.
Councilmember, Howard? Councilmember, Collette?
Yes.
Councilmember, Diggleville?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yeah. Um, any machine, we're gonna go into the next session. Okay, we're not, here five. Be threes, here four, and straight to B adjournments. Just got a second. Okay, Doctor, Governor, Doctor, Mayor made a motion, second by Councilmember, Howard.
Councilmember, Mayor? Councilmember, Howard?
Yeah.
Councilmember, Collette?
Yes.
Councilmember, Diggleville?
Yes.
Mayor Carter?
Yes. Thank you, guys. That was only six years. I will make sure my daughter will see here on Thursday, and we'll make sure that you find it out.